Good evening, City Council. May I have a motion to Gashkarian as Mayor Pro Tem?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome to the Monday, March 17, 2025 session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please roll call?
I beg your pardon. Mayor Pro Tem, Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Novit?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderman Notes? Alderman Powers?
Here.
Alderman Levert?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Alderman Walver?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Gashkarian, you have a quorum.
Please all, would you rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Mayor sends his regards. He was unable to be with us tonight. Getting right into it, the first item on the agenda is report of city officers. So I was just handed something. It's very timely. Wanted to bring up something wonderful over at Lake Forest High School. The Lake Forest Scouts Hockey's big win. The Lake Forest Scouts Hockey JV Gold Team won the state championship yesterday, Sunday, March 16th, at the United Center. They entered the final game as the underdogs, ranked number five against number two Providence Catholic. This is the first time in 38 years that the Scouts, Lake Forest LF Scouts Hockey, has made it to the state championship. And the team is composed of 20 LFHS student athletes. So, congratulations, Scouts. We're very proud of you. Continuing on. Next item on the agenda is Lake Forest Day proclamation, dine, shop, live, Lake Forest every day. Read the proclamation, Betty? All right. So proclamation, whereas the McKinlock Post 264 of the American Legion undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in the celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 6, 2020-25, with a view to bringing together the people of our city and in furtherance of civic interests and advancement of community fellowship and whereas the McKinlock Post 2064 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by saluting, shop, dine, and enjoy Lake Forest every day as this year's Lake Forest Day theme. Now therefore, hereby proclaim that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair and pursuant thereof, Tuesday, August 5, 25, and Wednesday, August 6, 2025, shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our community is urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in West Park in the spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of the city. There you have it. I would ask Tom Marks from the Post to come up and offer up some comments, please.
We have other restaurants outside of Lake Forest, but we are very pro-Lake Forest and the business. I mean, 80% of people that go and see a performance will have dinner somewhere local. So it's a good economic driver. Educationally, we have sessions in the fall, winter, spring, summer. We have three summer camps. We have Broadway Boot Camp, Beetlejuice, and what is our third show this summer? I can't keep it all straight. Newsies! So the kids will work on their triple threat skill sets. We do TYA in the summer. We've partnered with Lake Forest Openlands. Every summer, we go and we do an hour musical. It started with doing theater hikes around the property at Openlands. Six stations, we would tell part of the story of Ichabod Crane or Edgar Allan Poe during the fall, during the spooky time. That transitioned to Shakespeare. That transitioned to a family-friendly musical that's original for our community. Fundraising. How many have heard of the party that we throw every year? Adrianne and Nancy Smith, right across from West Campus, our West Park, has hosted us for the last 10 years. This year, for the first time, we're leaving Lake Forest to Barrington for the San Filippo Estate, which is a beautiful estate. As a 501(c)(3), that's part of what we have to do is fundraise, grant write, corporate sponsored. After the pandemic, most art organizations got clobbered. And we are still feeling the fallouts. People have found a comfy place on their couch to watch Netflix, and we've got to let them know that it is a difference seeing something live with other people laughing next to you. In the show that we're doing, there is a gasp at the end. There's a reveal that happens in this play, and it's fun. I always like to sneak in to hear the last five or 10 minutes of the play because it happens every night. And you don't get that on your sofa at home. Arts Link, something, and I've teamed up with partners in Lake Forest, Croya and Ragdale, Lake Forest Openland. So the friendships that I've created, the bonds that we've created, I do think that we are a cultural enhancement to the community. I can't believe this is the first time I've had a chance to talk to you guys. Well, anyways. Arts Link, Joanna Rollick at the Chamber, myself, James Lynch from the Art Center in Highland Park, have spearheaded a program in Lake County for all the arts, music, dance, performing arts, visual arts. We have a website, artslinknorth.com. It's everything that's happening in Lake County in the world of arts. Gallery openings, plays, dance recitals, concerts. Soon there will be a monthly newsletter that will go out via eBlast, and that will probably turn to weekly so that you'll know what's happening in the area as far as the fine arts. I am done talking. I think I'm about five minutes. I would like to open up any questions that you have on our organization. Yes, sir. I and U. Yeah. The most prolific playwright in America, Lauren Gunderson wrote it. We did her play Silent Sky last year. We had actually been nominated for several JEFF Awards. JEFF Awards are the Chicago equivalent to the Tony Awards in New York. So we were up for production. We were up for direction. So it's pretty profound. And we've had seven high school comes in, come in. We do talk backs with them after the show. The next show is called Jukebox for the Algonquin, set in a retirement home. They want a jukebox, and the way they go about getting this jukebox is a lot of fun. We've already booked seven retirement homes coming in for the matinees that we do. So the buses will get off and, you know, the folks will file in, and it's just fun. It's fun to see that. But, and my wife's in it, rehearsing tonight, as a matter of fact. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that concludes my report for the evening.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is for citizens who address the city council on any non-agenda items. I see somebody who'd like to share. Can state your name if you choose.
Mayor Pro Tem and everyone on the council, today I'll be positive poly. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Dana and the Police Department and everyone else for the designers for their wonderful showcase of the new plans for the police station. Everyone was exceptionally kind and gracious. It was a wonderful event, and I really appreciated it. So thank you for everything. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. So we're going to start with the Public Works Committee. And this will be specifically award of the low bid for the 2025 Patching and Resurfacing Project to Peter Baker and Son, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,551,740. Presenting tonight will be Byron Coats, Superintendent of Engineering. Byron?
Good evening, City Council. In conjunction with the approval of the annual resurfacing project this year, which is on the omnibus agenda, we thought it'd be a good idea to kind of talk through how our streets prioritize for resurfacing. How do we select them? So some communities resurface whole neighborhoods at a time. We have gotten inquiries about that over the years. And, you know, I know some municipalities do that for alleys as well. So they'll basically say, all right, these eight streets, these eight alleys, we're going to go ahead and do all of those all at once. So that's one approach. While the streets that are resurfaced here in Lake Forest may appear random because we're not necessarily doing that approach, we're strategically prioritizing those streets with the highest need. So what we're basically trying to do is we're trying to optimize that timing of when the streets have some type of treatment, be it resurfacing, crack filling, patching, and then hopefully you can avoid it, reconstruction. So kind of our philosophy is not too early, not too late. We want to kind of time it in the sweet spot of when it makes sense to invest those dollars. Basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to extend that life cycle by doing the right treatment on the right street at the right time. So that is why we are doing a slightly different approach than some communities that may just say, hey, no matter how old that street is, we're going to just do them all at once. That is why we do it a little bit differently. So our pavement management program in general consists of three major elements, and I kind of alluded to it a minute ago. So we have resurfacing, which we're talking about tonight, which is basically just milling off and replacing the top three inches of asphalt. Preventive maintenance is the second one. That would be like crack fill, patching. There's also some other technologies out there, but we, for the most part, just use those main two. And then reconstruction would be basically, you're removing the pavement all the way down to the stone, or maybe including the stone and rebuilding it back up. So if we were to do, like, for instance, a Wani Storm Sewer, whenever we pave that, that's going to be closer to a reconstruction. We're going to bring the asphalt all the way down and then bring it all the way back up. So looking at the flow chart at the bottom, I kind of want to walk you through the workflow when we're kind of making these decisions. So starting on the bottom left, we get the pavement management report. So we get that about every five years. We use a consultant that specializes in collecting that information. They have a data collection van that has a bunch of sensors on it, lasers. They drive all of our streets, which is about 110 to 120 miles, centerline miles. And that van is collecting millions of data points. And then they bring it back to their office, and they put it into a model. And basically, they're able to get a score, which we call pavement condition index, which I won't go into too much detail on. But they're able to get a score per street, and they basically put that in their report, and we're able to look at the score of each street. More importantly, we look at basically the health of our streets altogether. And that, to me, is the biggest use of that report of kind of knowing where we're at at any given time. So once we get that report, we cross-reference it with other CIP projects. So I'm kind of in the orange square now. So for instance, if we know we're going to do a water main project in five years, or we're going to do a storm sewer project, we try to avoid that. We'll see if we can wait on resurfacing or change the timing of the other project. So that is a very important step in this. Kind of after that, we would have some of our engineering staff actually go to the field and actually put eyes on every street. So they would drive every street, and they're probably driving more streets than we select because they want to go out there and they kind of want to validate the data. So like, we get the scores. It's on a spreadsheet. You know, there's pages, probably 20 pages of rows. So we kind of want to go through and kind of validate that data and make sure everything is making sense. So we do that, and then we also sit down with operations, specifically streets, and kind of go through any stuff they're seeing because their street supervisor is out on the road every day. So they're a really good resource. So we work with them. And then kind of as we go through that process, ultimately, we come up with a recommended resurfacing program, which we're going to present to you on the next slide. But in summary, what we're trying to do is we're trying to prioritize maintenance. We're trying to prioritize the rehabilitation efforts, doing it at the right time to basically get, you know, the maximum efficiency of our funding, and then to ultimately extend the roadway life and to, you know, improve safety for all users. So now, looking at the map here. So we have, let's see here, we have five years of resurfacing on here, actually four, because for next year, we don't have that list published yet. Looking in the dark blue, you'll see the list that we're proposed to do this year, which is about 2.6 miles. And then for reference, we also added in the streets for the last three years. So calendar year '24, '23, '22. The reason we wanted to show a few years back is to just kind of, you know, looking at any given year, the streets aren't necessarily organized in any certain way. You know, kind of like I said earlier, we're looking at all these different decision points that are helping us pick the streets. We're not necessarily always looking at it geographically, but when you look at it over a longer time period like this map shows, you do see over time, we are covering and touching a lot of, you know, a lot of the different streets in the city. And then now looking at the table on the left, you may ask, you know, why are there kind of these jumps in the centerline miles? So like, you know, year '22 is 1.2 miles, and then year '23 goes up to 3.1 miles. There certainly is a little bit of market pricing that goes into any given year, you know, depending on petroleum pricing, cost, you know, cost of a barrel of oil. That certainly fluctuates a little bit. But the biggest reason you'll see some differences here is just due to the funding level that given year. So basically, every third year, we use motor fuel tax, what we call MFT funding, which the state collects. So 2023 is 3.1 miles. That is a MFT year. So it's a little bit of a larger budget that year of 1.5 million. And then you'll also see another jump, a projected jump in year 2026, which again is another MFT year. In between that, we generally have local funds, but I just kind of wanted to give you a reason of kind of why it kind of goes up and down there a little bit. And as mentioned in the beginning, this item is part of your omnibus agenda. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you so much. My question is in regards to, on the picture here, item number 10, in the dark blue. So in the fourth ward there on Mount Vernon, aren't some of those streets in that area concrete?
There are some. So we address that on our separate concrete program, which will be coming in a month or so. But I believe it's east of there a little bit. There's basically a collection of like six or seven, actually just south of there, southeast of there. Yeah, you're close.
Okay.
Yeah, but those are asphalt. I actually re-drove all the streets this morning in the Mount Vernon area. I don't know if you want me to go into too much detail, but it's basically disintegrating, like the aggregate's just coming apart. So it is time for that street to be resurfaced.
Thank you.
Yes.
Byron, thank you. I have a math problem question for you.
All right.
This averages like 20 and a half miles every year. And are there 109 miles of streets in Lake Forest?
Depending on, it's somewhere in between 110 to 120 miles. Yes.
So that would calculate that every 42 years, your street would get rezoned?
Yeah, I mean, I guess using that math. I mean, in general, we're hitting up streets. So like a normal resurfacing cycle for a lot of communities is somewhere in between 15 and 20 years. So some communities, maybe there's more traffic or, you know, different variables. They may do a 15-year cycle. A 15-year cycle would be considered pretty aggressive to be able to do that. We're closer to probably like a 20-year cycle. But, you know, if the road will obviously last longer, you know, if we can go and do some patching, some crack filling, that will certainly extend out. We're not just artificially replacing a street at year 20 if it doesn't need it. Yeah, we don't necessarily look at it that way, but yeah, I mean, per that math, that would be in theory what it is. But usually, where we're looking at some kind of treatment, either really early on, like before you get any deterioration, like you come and you do crack filling and try to keep water out, or some other type of treatment. Otherwise, you're doing some kind of resurfacing treatment somewhere in the 15, 20, 25, 30-year range. And then depending on if you do wait closer to that 50-year range, depending on whatever the circumstances, you may be into like a reconstruction where it may be too late to resurface, and now you're going a little bit deeper.
Any other questions? Point of clarification, this is not an omnibus. So this is a separate.
Oh, I apologize about that.
Yeah.
Well, I would just add a comment from the Public Works Committee. There are opportunities for us sometimes just to secure state grants where they help pay for a portion of the project. And so that will also contribute to a segment of roadway, let's say, being, you know, rehabilitated or replaced. And generally, we'll seek those funds for total replacement of pavement.
Wonderful. Hearing no other comments or questions. This is a separate agenda item. So this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Do we have any comments from the public present? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on this council action. Award the low bid for the 2025 Patching and Resurfacing Project to Peter Baker and Son Company and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $1,551,740. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Byron. Next item on the agenda is the items for omnibus vote. If there is any item that, when I finish reading, if any alderman would like to be removed and taken separately, please do so at the end. The nine agenda items are, number one, approval of the March 3, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item number two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding a raffle in the city of Lake Forest for the School of St. Mary's Parents Association. Approval by motion. Item number three, annual vendor approvals for fiscal year 2026. Number four, approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Sundance Lawn Care for citywide grounds maintenance services in the Parks fiscal year 2026, and for an amount not to exceed $208,890. Item number five, approval of a recommendation from Parks and Recreation Board to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Sports Surface Pros for Waveland Park Tennis and Basketball Court Resurfacing Services in the amount of $45,000 to include a contingency in the amount of $4,500 for a total cost of $49,500. Item number six, approval of an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution appropriating $42,811 in rebuild Illinois funds to be used for Phase One Design Engineering Services of the Ringwood Bridge Project. Item number seven, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations for the Building Review Board for 1138 Ridge Road, 825 Morningside Drive, 1080 Sir William Lane, and 1411 Estate Lane. First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Item number eight, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission in support of granting a building scale variance for addition at 1051 Meadow Lane. Again, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And finally, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals for 1251 Edgewood Road and 1051 Meadow Lane. Finally, first reading, and if desired by the city council, for final approval. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's a voice vote, correct?
A roll call.
It's a roll call. Thank you.
Alderman Walver?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemmons?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is old Next on the agenda is old business. There's none that's been posted before the city. And so following that is new business, and we have none this evening. Finally, additional items for discussion, comments by City Council members. Does anybody want to share anything or bring anything up? No, Mayor Tac isn't going to be crushed. I finished a meeting quicker than him. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? And I would ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.